Trustees and parents, family members, staff members in the audience. We're proud to recognize students from both Wesaco East High School and Wesaco High School for Division One ratings at Pigskin. And we also will be recognizing our Wesaco High School Girls' Varsity Cross Country who won district. So, Mr. Robleto.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, we want to congratulate our high school bands for their outstanding performance at the annual Battle of the Bands known as Pigskin Jubilee. How about if we bring in first? We're going to start off with the Westlaco East Wildcat Regiment. How about a big hand as they enter? Don't worry, not the entire band is here. That would be difficult. There's about 240 or so kids. But go ahead and come on up to the front a little bit, and we're going to recognize you all. And as I say your name, because I know some of you guys might not be here on this list, but as I say your name, you can step forward or raise your hand so we can acknowledge you, okay? All right. So, representing the Westlaco East Wildcat Regiment Dance Guard, our Second Lieutenant, Deanne Gonzalez. We also have First Lieutenant Carolina De Leon. And co-captain Jessica Gomez. And Captain Roxana Lopez, all from the dance team. Representing the regiment are section leaders from the percussion section, front ensemble First Lieutenant Dante Delagarza. We also have here drum line First Lieutenant Joshua Chares. Thank you. From the brass section, baritone First Lieutenant Jerry Reyes. Trombone First Lieutenant Alexandra Mejia. Trombone Captain Daniel Gomez. Meliphon First Lieutenant. Casas. Trummit First Lieutenant. Ibarra. We have from the woodwinds section, low reeds First Lieutenant Joey Ayala. Saxophone Second Lieutenant Sofia Martinez. First Lieutenant Soraida Castillo. Clarinet Second Lieutenant Brianna Cavazos. First Lieutenant Maria Villanueva. We also have here flute First Lieutenant Aissa Garcia. And we have Captain Nubia Madrigal. We have field captain, and that is Arlette Grimaldo. Assistant drum majors are Jasmine Peña. And Victoria Mena. And the head drum major for the Wildcat Regiment is Alyssa Aguilar. And we'd also like to recognize their leader, their band director, Armando Cuellar. All right. So, how about a big hand for the Wildcat Regiment? Congratulations on bringing home the one. And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized as well? Parents, guardians. All right. Would anybody like to say anything?
We want to congratulate them as a team. Y'all did wonderful this year, and of course, we'll continue to do the best. I know that great things are expected, and y'all are delivering every single day. We love you, we love your music, and good job. Good job.
Congratulations, and y'all can exit this way. Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
Good job, guys. Good job. Good job.
Okay. Up next, we'd also like to recognize the Westlaco High School Panther Corps. And they can enter now. They sure are. Here we go, Panther Corps. Come on in. And you can step forward right over here. We'll file everybody in here before we get started. Now, the, as I announce your, as I say your name, students, as I say your name, if you're here, which you are, just wave your hand or step forward to be recognized, okay? All right. The Wesaco Panther Corps also received top scores at Pigskin. Representing the Corps are the color guard officers, Jaclyn Castillo. Leann Cavazos. Iliana Martinez. And Captain Marissa Mendoza. And we have here representing the Corps and their section leaders from the percussion section, front ensemble, Ian Amaya. There you go. There we go. We'll switch it up a little bit. Thank you. And from the drum line, Erin Peña. All right. Now, from the brass section, trombones, Jerick Garcia. And Luis Ortiz. Trumpets, Ricardo Peña. And Zoe Peña. We also have here Mari Cruz Perez. French horns, Brian Lo. Baritones, Steven Vallejo. Part of the tubas, Alejandro Vasquez. Also here from the woodwinds section, clarinets, Melena Cabrera. And we also have Kayla Garcia. Saxophones, Michaela Mata. Rolando Roman. Flutes, Megan Rodriguez. Brianna Silva. And we also have Alicia Viera. We'd also like to introduce the assistant drum majors, Alexis Gomez. And Gabriela Sines. Head drum major is Emmanuel Lopez. Let's also recognize their band director, Rodrigo Lial. Congratulations to the Panther Corps for their Division One at the Pigskin Jubilee. Congratulations. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents.
Thank you. Thank you. We have another, another perfect example of, of youth that y'all received a gift, you know? Being able to do music, I've tried, and I did not receive that gift, so. But y'all do great, and congratulations on your win and being, getting a one in Pigskin. That's a great, great, great honor that you brought to Wesaco. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Mr. Lopez, Mr. President, I'd also like to point out that Mr. Ron Bisson, this is his first year as our Fine Arts Director, and already the programs are producing very well.
Perfect. That is correct.
Congratulate him and his work as well.
Okay. Well, let's continue on with the accolades here this evening. We want to congratulate members of the Wesaco High Girls' Cross Country Team as they enter. Lady Panthers are the 32-6A Cross Country District Champions Regional Qualifiers.
Right.
All right. So, let's recognize the girls. As I say your name, can you please wave to the audience? Destiny Longoria. Eleanor Arnt. Aaliyah Garza. We also have Savannah Mendez. Natalie Garcia. And Amity Ebarb. We have their coaches that are also here. We have head coach Pablo Amaguer. And assistant coach Lily Skolinski. Congratulations.
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 Good job. Good job, girls.
Good job, girls. Thank you very much.
Another great example.
If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents.
Hard work pays off. Good job. Carlos, is that all we have for tonight?
Okay. The next item on this agenda is item three, which is adjournment. Take a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Time now is...
I don't know, Rosemary, does she need time to change the tape, or are we good to go? Good to go?
Time is 6:14, and I call this regular board meeting of the Wesaco ISD School District to order. Today's date is November 13, 2017, and I did say that the time was 6:14, so we'll move on to item number, number two, which is establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera and Andrew Gonzalez, who just stepped out for a second. He'll be back shortly. Item number three, opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Good evening. Our opening prayer will be led by librarian Ruby Garza from Ibarra Elementary. Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Before we move on, let the record reflect that Andrew Gonzalez joined the meeting at 6:15.
Good evening. As we open up in prayer this evening, I want us to keep in mind our fellow Texans who have suffered a loss and tragedy in Sutherland Springs, Texas. Let's close our eyes and bow our heads. Dear Lord, we come before you as a united body who mourns for the innocent lives lost in our dear state. We pray that you would bring healing and comfort to those who have suffered the loss of a loved one. We pray for those individuals who are turmoilled by hate and anger. Bring them peace and put people in their path who will show them your love, which we recognize is the only thing that will remove the darkness. We thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for the safety and well-being of all our staff, both the teaching and the support, that their words and actions be guided by the love and compassion of the Holy Spirit. Bless them for heeding this call and teach them to walk in your ways as they mold and inspire our children. Give them patience and strength for the journey that is ahead. Although it be tiresome, we know that when we do it for your honor and glory, it is rewarding and nourishing to our spirit. We also take this time to ask you for any Wesaco ISD family who is in need of your healing hand. We pray that wherever it is that they find themselves and whatever need they might have, that your presence would bring them peace, and your mighty hand would bring them the healing that their bodies need. We pray for our precious students, bless them and protect them in all that they do. Be with them as they open their minds to new knowledge and understanding. May they hunger for wisdom and revelation. We ask that you help them to tackle on whatever challenges are up ahead. Give them the strength and courage to be successful and victorious in all that they set their minds to do. Protect their minds and their hearts, Lord. Today, we also come before you, and we humbly ask you to be with our board members and administrative leaders. We ask you to continue to pour of your wisdom and guidance, courage, and strength upon them. Be with them in their deliberations and help them to be wise in the decisions that they make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity, that the decisions that they make may reflect what is good and what is right. Dear Lord, grant us all the humility to always seek your will in all that we say and all that we do. We thank you beforehand for the successes and victories that are coming to Wesaco ISD, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for the prayer. Moving on to item number four, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have two students, Jacob Munoz and Abriana Gomez, who will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Robleto.
We could have Jacob Munoz and Abriana Gomez come up here, please. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, first of all, I'd like to introduce Jacob Munoz and Abriana Gomez. Jacob is the son of Abraham and Maribel Munoz, and he is a fifth grader at Ibarra Elementary. Jacob has excelled in star exam scoring, masters in both reading and math sections. Jacob also thrives in many extracurricular activities. In addition to his involvement with Quests in Robotics, he is also a UIL contestant for spelling and a member of the Journalism Club. He just finished publishing the first Ibarra newsletter for his campus. Jacob enjoys playing soccer, basketball in his spare time, and has aspirations of becoming a professional soccer player. How about a big hand for Jacob Munoz? We would also like to recognize this evening, Abriana Gomez, who is the daughter of Candy Roman. She is also a fifth grader at Ibarra Elementary and has also mastered the reading and math sections of the star exam. Abriana is also involved in many clubs. Her involvement includes quests, robotics, UIL spelling, and journalism. Moreover, she is on the school cheer squad, just part of her seven-year cheerleading career. Abriana's favorite subject is mathematics, and she is looking forward to one day becoming a math teacher for WISD after attending the University of Texas at Austin. How about a big hand for Abriana Gomez? And we'd also like to recognize their parents. If they're here, can they please wave? Students, if you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good job. Good job. So young, and they already have their career path and everything set up. That's wonderful. That's what we do here in Wesaco.
Moving on to item number five is awards and recognitions, and we already took care of that, or do we have some more? Okay. Yes, we had a workshop earlier where we knew this was going to be a long meeting, so we took care of that a little bit earlier, and it's on, should be on KWEST also. Moving on to item number six, proclamation for Parental Involvement Day, November 16, 2017.
All right.
Ready? Go ahead.
Okay. We have members of the parental involvement program and department, can they please stand and be recognized? We have a proclamation to read.
There they are. There we go.
Whereas, the National Parental Involvement Day will be celebrated in Wesaco ISD, November 16, 2017, and whereas, school board president Erasmo Lopez will be honorary co-chairman of the community focusing on Parental Involvement Day, and whereas, Wesaco ISD promotes parental involvement targeting student success in public schools as the grassroots level, integrated community awareness in an effort, united effort, to representatives throughout the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Erasmo Lopez, president of the Wesaco Independent School District, School Board, does hereby support and proclaim the day of November 16, 2017, as Parental Involvement Day.
We want to thank you for all your hard work, and, you know, we want to make this day special for you all. We know that it's a small thing that we can do for all the hard work that you do, but thank you so much from, from a grateful district for all that you do for our kids and to help our teachers and to help our kids move along and succeed in life. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven is public comments, and we have nobody that signed up, so we will move on to item number eight, superintendent's report, Dr. Canales.
Good evening again. We do have four items to report, student enrollment, ADA, and Andres, I'll ask you to assist with ADA, possible projects and resources with a 2 cent tax increase, full day pre-K, and insurance. So, I'll begin with the enrollment. So, for Week 11 in Wesaco Independent School District, we are up by 42 students, thanks to the efforts of the ELF program. Will be expanded into Progresso and Donna. You can see the difference of the elementaries ranging from minus, well, minus eight, and we're still working. Mr. Aguilar works closely with the elementary principals to talk about, to look at enrollments where kids are going every week, and also withdrawals. So, withdrawal is where they're going, and enrollment is when they're coming in and having conversations about that. If you'll turn to the next slide, on the next slide, the difference at elementaries is 243. So, we have 243 less students in elementaries than we did last year. Middle schools are up from last year by 102. High schools are down by 87. Alternative education program is up by 10, and the ELF Academy, where you can see the difference, it's leading to us being over enrollment from last year by 42, is up by 260. So, what does this mean for Wesaco ISD? Well, you have to also consider attendance. Andres. Mr. Sanchez.
Dr. Canales, the Lopez members of the board. For the ADA, this last Friday was the end of the second six weeks of school. In our average for the two six weeks, it's 248 less than last year. We are 15,866. Our budget was 16,170. If it were to continue like that for the year, we will be losing about $1.8 million in ADA state revenue. Luckily, we, that's not the end, it's barely the beginning, and the ADA will improve. The additional student we picked up in the ELF Academy, having them attend school every day from now till the end of the school year, will turn around what we have right now. But the ADA right now is 15,866 at the average of the two six weeks of school.
It's very important that our parents get their kids out to school.
Yes. And our principals are working on that, calling them parents or students and helping with that effort.
One thing that I notice in the, in the district enrollment comparison is that it seems like the majority of the schools that have lost students come from the south or the east side of town as opposed to the west and the north side. I mean, there are schools that have gained, quite a few, but I wonder, I just wonder why? I wonder, have we seen anything in our studies that would show why in those particular areas?
Well, some conversations that we have had are some of the families who've moved away for more affordable housing in your districts. We don't, we have gotten to geographic, is this, you know, the, the south and, like you said, the east. It's something that we can take a look at. Both Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Aguilar have conversations with principals. We look at both enrollment and ADA at cabinet every Monday and have conversations about it to make sure that we're helping our parents understand the importance, number one, of kids being in school every single day. An example given today was that if a parent decides that one child is sick sometimes in some cases, and this is rare, but it's important, a parent will keep the two other children home as well. So, it's important that we, you know, work with our parent community liaisons, that we work with our principals, that we send the message from the district about the importance of every single day. Education does matter. Okay. Moving on to the possible projects and resources, priorities for the 2 percent tax increase. Happy to say that our, at our coffee conversations and connections meetings, which we've had at all elementary schools except for Memorial, will be at Memorial tomorrow morning at 7:30, we've been asking parents at the end to share their ideas. Some topics that keep on coming up and we've identified as patterns are more extracurricular programs and activities such as athletics and fine arts at the elementary schools. Full day pre-kindergarten comes up at almost every single meeting we have. When you can offer full day pre-kindergarten, it's important for the literacy, the pre-literacy and the pre-numeracy. Anti-bullying or positive behavior programs and writing programs. So, those are the patterns from our parents, from elementary parents. We also had a students advisory committee on October 25, 2017, and we broke the students up into two groups. Elementary students work with Mr. Aguilar, secondary students work with Mrs. Peterson, and we asked, you know, what can we do, what can we do for you? How can we improve your educational experience in Wesaco ISD? Elementary students said, we want to see the Little Panther Wildcat relays back, the track and field competition that existed a couple years ago. We want to have the same clubs at elementary schools. They're smart. They're here with one elementary house, and then they ask, why don't we have that? And looked at me and said, Dr. Canales, kind of like, get it together, we should have the same things. So, they talked about same clubs, book clubs. They're loving to read, and we're excited to see that they want book clubs. Music and fine arts came up. Why can't we be better about getting ready for the middle school experience? They were telling us to have music programs, fine arts programs, and they even asked for athletic programs. And then Spanish classes. Secondary students at that same meeting told us that some students need social emotional supports. Before they can really learn, they may have issues at home, out in the community, that we need to help them deal with. They too want district competitions going into the middle schools. The example given was debate teams and more. Bringing authors to the district, they're excited about reading, and they too said, can't you spend, or can't you figure out a way to bring authors that we enjoy to come talk to us about the importance of literacy? Good collection of books. This was interesting. They told us, you usually have one book, maybe two in the library, but what if we want to get together and talk about these books, you know, as groups? We need, you know, more than one copy of our favorite book. And then, of course, they said book clubs too. So, we were happy to, to hear that. We also talked to cabinet. Cabinet, each cabinet member works, or chairs a subcommittee of the district advisory committee. So, curriculum instruction, you'll see reading, reading materials, books for the elementary classrooms, that we have rich libraries in our classrooms to support guided reading. Materials and resources for the Advanced Academics Academy, which is brand new, and it's open to middle school students, and it's for gifted and talented middle school students. Textbooks and materials for early college high school as we grow that program. Science supplies and equipment. State law still requires, I believe, 40 percent labs in science classes, and expansion of the blended learning, which includes a technology as a tool for learning. Superintendent Cabinet also is hearing from the community and from people about the importance of full day pre-K if we want to prepare them for a strong foundation for kindergarten. Music and art summer programs, we get that a lot. You offer athletics types of events for summer. Enrichment, where's the fine arts, where's the music? Safety and security, we talked about canine, canine unit, another dog, and the possibility of school resource officers. Okay. So, on the next slide, we have what DAC said. I'd like to thank Ms. Janie Peña, where are you, Janie? And Mrs. Peterson, they work with me on the district advisory committee, came up with a voting process. We're all 76 members, elected members. Committee, came up with a voting process. Were all 76 members, elected members, voted. The number one pick was a full day pre-kindergarten. If you're going to do anything with that one million, it benefits our district to start up a full day pre-K. Other things were curriculum and instruction, college and career readiness, enrichment programs, and health, safety, and security. Those are the top five. Now, if you'll turn to the next slide, I stopped at five because that's where the money runs out, okay, with our estimates. Full day pre-K, if we're looking at classroom furniture, we're looking at teacher desks and chairs, we're looking at the curriculum, the technology, the interactive panels that we have for pre-K students, the software and the Chromebooks, and we're looking for resources, supplies, and manipulatives, and other types of materials that would cost about $364,000. Curriculum instruction, $130,000 for the reading materials for elementary classrooms, for supplies and resources for the Advanced Academics Academy, for textbooks and materials for early college high school, and for science supplies and equipment for high school due enrollment, that costs about $130,000, according to our estimates right now. College and career readiness, a Naviance tracking program and test prep that includes career interest for college readiness, that's about $71,000. And then enrichment programs, which the committee that Coach Riojas, Oscar Riojas leads with Mr. Bissett, there he is, really wants to focus on the fine arts. So Summer Fine Arts Academy to go along with the rich experiences we involve, we open up to students enrolled in Westlaco ISD. Middle School Mariachi Instruments, we also heard this from parents that a lot of times children want to be in band, but because the instruments are so expensive, the parents can't afford them. So having an inventory of instruments for students in need who can't afford to buy or rent so that they too can participate in band. And then this year, we're having the First Annual Fine Arts Fiesta, which we're excited about. And the, another option, and that's a mistake, it should be an extra bullet, is portable staging, lights, and sound, just to carry around for different events. So that is $285,000. So that leaves us out of the million, about $148,000, which takes us to our fifth priority identified by DAC, which is middle school, high school resource officers, and district, two district truancy officers. So those are some possibilities after lots of planning with parents, with students, and with our District Advisory Committee for the use of the million dollars that will be available to us not till next year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next report is about our, the full day pre-K program, and for this, we have Mrs. Janie Benya who'll be presenting, and Mrs. Melva Seguda.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members. Dr. Canales?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, you can hear me right?
Yes.
You all know who I am, you all know who she is. So we're going to present to you about our pre-K program, or what we would like to see in our pre-K program for a full day. Do I have control over this? Okay. What I want to talk to you is about the benefits of having a full day pre-K program. What we would like to see is students getting a little bit more education, and as we all know, the pre-K program serves low-income students. And it is seen as an investment that pays off in the long run by reducing the number of children who will do poorly in higher grades. So we can prepare them better, so they can do better once they reach third, fourth, and fifth grade, those testing grades. There it is. Sorry.
The other way.
I'm trying. I've hit all of them.
There you go.
Okay. So what are some of the benefits? According to the National Institute for Early Education Research, there are very, 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 excuse me, there are real measurable returns for the money that we spend on quality full-day preschool. According to James Heckman, who is a University of Chicago economist, has found that there's a huge cost benefit. For example, there is decreased jail time for poor children who have attended preschool. Pretty amazing. In general, it can also lead to higher IQs, better self-esteem, and fewer behavior issues. Also, students will be school-ready by focusing on the development of language, literacy, early math, executive functions, which is a lot of the social emotional, the self-help, nature and science, STEM, for example, a lot of active hands-on involvement in learning, cognitive development, and pre-K writing. The other benefits of an all-day pre-K is a parent will be provided the opportunity to get involved in the child's education. We're hoping that the encouragement by the parent will produce a self-sufficient student and a lot of family literacy as well. Other benefits is for those families prefer to have their children at school all day so they can be allowed the opportunity to work. Thus, our pre-K enrollment will increase. Lower-income families will also have the opportunity to enroll children in all-day programs while saving on expensive preschool childcare programs. And I think most importantly, it'll help increase our student enrollment. What are students going to do all day? What I have here is a set of pictures of our ELF students. You can see that they are working with interactive panels. We have students working on line graphs, measuring volt meters, the life of the battery that they use for the mission to Mars, the Mars rover. They're actually working on it, they're working on math assignments. They're working on experiments, science experiments. They talk about hypothesis. They talk about, excuse me, conclusions, the electric cycle. So there's a lot that they can do, but these students can do this because they're a full day. They're there at the Headstarts all day long. Even though our teachers are only there half a day, they are at the Headstart full day. So I think that if we make our students, our pre-K fours all, all day, they'll be able to have some of these additional benefits as well that these students have. These students work a lot and do very well. So in talk, in looking at our past enrollment data, we looked, we went all the way back to 1415 and looked at the number of students we had. We had 774 students. We had zero ELF Academy students and approximately 23 teachers. Going on to 1516, at peak enrollment date in December, we had 1,252 enrolled students, of which 311 were ELF Academy students, 941 were on the campuses, and we had 22 campus teachers. This does not include the ELF teachers. 1617, in January of 2017, we had 1,063 students, of which 315 were ELF, 748 were pre-K four students on a campus, and 21 teachers. So you can see kind of enrollment went down the following year. In 1106 of this year, we had 1,293, 565 ELF students, and 728 regular campus pre-K four students, and 20 teachers assigned to the students. We also looked at the data enrollment in the surrounding districts for 1516 and 1617. Mercedes went from 225 students to 291. They had a slight increase. We don't have 1718 data right now. Donna went from 750 students to 591. They had a big loss. At Calchelso, from 293 to 445. They also contracted or had an MOU with Headstart, so they had an increase in students. Progresso went from 134 to 117, pre-K four students. Montessori, Horizon Montessori, went from 374 students to 375. IDEA Westlaco, 1516, had no program. 1617, they recruited and had 171 students. IDEA Donna went from zero students to 140. And in the entire county of Hidalgo, IDEA went from 394 in 1516 to 1,677. So able to recruit quite a few.
Does IDEA have a full pre-K?
They're half-day.
How many facilities do they have?
I know they have one here in Westlaco, one in Donna. Other than that, I don't know where else they're located in the county. I think they have one in Mission, La Jolla.
Check on that and find out where.
They have one in Far. Yes, they have one in Far.
I'm sure they're all over.
Right, we can, we can get the numbers and share it in the board update.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mel.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, members of the board. I will continue the presentation with identifying the district needs in order to implement a full-day pre-K program. As Ms. Benya previously mentioned, we currently have 728 pre-K students, and we're basing our report here on just maintaining slightly increasing that number to 750 for accounting purposes. Now, our hope would be that the number increases, but just to kind of stay consistent with what we have right now and changing that program to full day, we're going to stick with that number. So at 750 students, a full-day pre-K, the ratio would still maintain at 22 to 1, which would require 34 full-time teachers. As Ms. Benya mentioned, we currently have 20 pre-K teachers. And out of the 20, we, if you subtract that, that means that we will need 14 additional full-time pre-K teachers. Out of the 14 new pre-K teachers, we have currently identified seven from staff over just at the elementaries that we can pull to those assignments, and therefore we will only be required to cover seven new allocations next year to get this program going. Now, once again, I want to reiterate that that is maintaining the same number, but if we start getting a, a good response and that number increases, then our new allocations will also increase. But for the moment, we're going to stick to that, seven new allocations at an average of 406,000 in salaries. Okay, and as I mentioned, we would be requiring 34 full-day pre-K classrooms. As we said, we would need 14 additional new classrooms for a full-day program. We are subtracting three from that number. If you noticed that we used to have 23 pre-K classrooms and we shut down three at the beginning of this school year due to the low enrollment. So we know that the classes exist, three classrooms with furniture, and so therefore we're taking those three out of the equation. That would require 11 classrooms with furniture. So we went ahead and broke it down. As far as classroom furniture, $77,000. Curriculum for 14 new classrooms at $63,000. Technology, as you saw in the photos, we have interactive panels that they use and software. We have a Rover's curriculum packet at $28,000, and we also provide Chromebooks for a lot of our Headstart classrooms. So we want to continue that with the pre-K for a total of $182,000. Supplies and manipulatives would be at $42,000. Other requirements that we have identified, what we will need to do is conduct a building capacity analysis of each campus so that we can identify where we can double up some of these pre-K classrooms. We do have some campuses that are landlocked. They don't have extra classrooms, and so therefore they'll have to maintain with the same current two pre-K classrooms. But we do have available space at other elementaries with lower enrollment where we can double up to four. So we'll just, you know, have to identify where we can reroute these students to. We will also need to coordinate with the Transportation Department regarding morning and afternoon drop-off schedules, and we will also need to coordinate with Food Service with Ms. Benya to discuss the breakfast and lunch for 750 full-day students. One thing that we were discussing is the possibility of continuing with a family-style lunch that is being provided to Headstart students, and that kind of just helps them learn how to get together at the dinner table as a unit. And so those are some of the things that will be discussed with staff.
How many other districts around us do offer a full-day pre-K?
Currently, the ones that we know of is Donna. They started full-day. PSJ has been doing full-day for, for quite a while. I believe Harlingen, CISD is offering full-day. I'm not sure about Mercedes.
Mission. My granddaughter goes there.
Mission. Yeah, there's several that are.
Westlaco's the right choice.
They live, they live over there. I would love for them to be.
Transportation.
What, so when you look at the other districts, what's their return on investment on going into a full-day kindergarten? I mean, is it paying off, seeing an increase in enrollment?
Well, I, I don't have the information, but what I do want to tell you about that is, you know, this is the second year in a row, as you saw the numbers, we've increased the enrollment due to our MOU partnership with Headstart, which is a full-day program. We have seen that, we have lost some of the first Headstart students that we enrolled because it doesn't make sense to go from a full-day Headstart program to a half-day pre-K and stay in the district. So we have experienced a loss there, and we have seen it to the neighbor district, Donna, as opposed to IDEA. So we want to continue that flow of full-day, all-day so that they can also retain the instruction that they're learning. And by doing so, we believe that their siblings will also stay. So we just want to continue with that pattern.
Okay.
Mr. Patrick, I could talk about Harlingen because most of the pre-K students that began stay there, and so the next year, they start kindergarten in first grade. And overall, even though IDEA's not over there, right, yet, it has been minimal student loss over this past two years.
That's good.
Okay, and moving on to our final slide, this is just a summary. As I mentioned, we're going to stay with the 750 at half-day ADA, which would be at 3,750. Possible ADA that could be generated, or that is generated at that amount, is 2.8 million. Then we went ahead and broke down the salaries for year one, 406, and that is the seven new allocations that are required, furniture, curriculum, technology, and supplies. So the first year expenditures would be 770 to fund the full-day pre-K. Now, year, year two, we just go ahead and subtract the furniture and all the initial items that we've already purchased. So year two would be at 436.
The supplies and technology that we'll buy will be good enough for more than one year?
Yes, yes, definitely. What will not be good for just one year is the curriculum because we do have an online curriculum that our pre-K four students use. We use that for blended learning, and it's very, so far it's been very successful.
What type of curriculum is it? Do you know the name of it?
It's Waterford Smart Start.
Waterford?
It's, yeah, yeah. Well, Smart Start is the name of the curriculum for the pre-K four. It's very, very engaging for the little ones. They get in there and they'll sing and dance. They learn the names of all the characters, and then they go back to circle time, and the teacher reads a book, and it has the characters that they've learned about online, and so they know them, and they name them, "Oh, that's so-and-so, and I just heard this." It's very, it becomes very exciting for them.
Okay.
And by the way, I just wanted to say too, that several teachers have mentioned to me that they've seen a big difference in vocabulary for the students from past years. The students are, they have a much higher vocabulary. They speak more, and it's due to what they're doing online.
I have a question. How do we plan to, you know, I guess, put the word out for the community that we are providing this?
You, you kind of beat me to that. That was my next.
Oh, I thought you guys were done with it.
I don't have another slide, but I wanted to let you know that the reason that we're bringing this to you today is, as Dr. Canales has already mentioned, we have presented this to the DAC. They did rank it number one. They do feel that this is what will help us not only recruit but retain our students. So we wanted to go ahead and get your blessing to start using this as part of our marketing tool. And so what we would do is normally we'll do a pre-K roundup in March, and we want to hit the ground running like ASAP, and use this as a marketing tool, you know. Pre-register now to save your seat and start a waiting list from there and see what, you know, what kind of enrollment we can generate for planning purposes in the summer for budget time.
So you'd have to wait till March?
No. In the past, we normally wait for March, and we're not going to do that. We're going to recruit every day from now on.
December?
As soon as we finish this meeting.
And the plan, the plan would be to have it going for the 2018 to 19 school year?
Yes, next school year, yes.
And we're using some of the funds from the increase of the two cents to fund?
Yes, minus the salaries.
Minus the salaries.
Yes.
Now, would this be in conjunction with, you know, the current programs that we have right now? ELF, you wouldn't expect to see any drop-off in numbers with those programs there?
Because of ELF, is that what you're asking, that they would prefer to be in the district? Actually, I don't think that there would be a change. ELF, because of Head Start, they have waiting lists that are quite lengthy, so I think that we would be able to bring in those students who are waiting to get in. Now, the other thing is that if parents want district services, they're already getting them at Head Start. So I don't see a problem.
Well, and then the Head Start eligibility, the criteria for income is a lot lower than what is the criteria for.
For the district.
For the district, correct?
Yes.
By the state?
Yes.
So there's probably a lot more students waiting, but they don't meet the Head Start criteria.
Correct.
So.
They would meet ours, though, however.
Now, one thing we talked about earlier, you mentioned earlier, Dr. Canales, was the truancy officers. You know, to me, you know, what's the projected shortfall if it were, is over $1 million? Mr. Sanchez? If the ADA were to stay the same?
1.8.
So, you know, in my opinion, you know, truancy officers, you know, would probably help, you know, offset some of that loss in revenue, and I think that's something that we should really consider, you know, to try and make up some of that loss.
Right, and the two items under safety and security, which came in number five from DAC, one of them was school resource officers, and I think that's about $300,000, and the other one, two truancy officers, that was about, what did we say, Mr., about 70, 78, 74,000, which we still could, if we plan correctly, get to that part of number five by DAC.
Along and along, unlike the all-day kindergarten. I mean, it's a great thing. I know that if you work with a child for four hours or half a day as opposed to working with him all day, of course, he's going to move forward and get more advanced. Going into the next grade after that, they'll be that far ahead, and then it'll carry on all the way through life. I know we've talked about dollars and money and how much do we lose, but I think we need to look at what do we gain by having the full-day pre-K? You know, I think we gain a lot, and by helping that child, you know, it improves, you know, in the long run, it's going to improve their way of life and everything, everybody wins.
I agree.
You know, so I like it. I don't know, I know the rest of the board is going to be with it, but I know we have to bring it back at a different time if you need some action on it to move forward on it. So, but I think we're on a good track, and we'll make it happen.
When was the last time we had full, full pre-K?
I think it's when the classes were over here at Stephen F. Austin. I don't know what year was dismantled.
That's right.
Do you?
Yeah.
I don't.
We did?
Now, how does, how will this work? And we have half-day right now. Will it be, still be available, or everybody's going to get full?
Everybody will be full day.
Full day.
And it's everybody who qualifies for the program.
Correct, everybody, you would have to qualify. If we bring in students who do not qualify, which we can, we can serve students who do not qualify, we would not get any ADA for them. So if we had, say, 45 students, and we don't get ADA, so that would be a teacher that we're funding, or two teachers that we're funding to service those 45 students.
Now, I didn't see any cost for transportation. Do you not anticipate any increase? Have we talked to Mr. Garcia to see if?
To Mr. Del Rosso.
Mr. Del Rosso?
We haven't done any actual calculations for the transportation piece of it. I don't expect it would be too much. We have done very well in maximizing the efficiency of our routes, so we have saved some funds there. So anything extra, depending on the enrollment, depending on where they're at, we'd have to look at it, but I don't see that tipping the scales, if you will.
Currently, you're doing four routes, morning, then delivery, pickup, delivery. So therefore, we'll just have morning and drop-off.
Pickup and drop-off versus twice a day.
Oh, so we'll be cutting out some of the driving?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Now, Dr. Canales, you mentioned part of our loss, these students, the surveys, it's due to a housing issue.
Yeah, we, part of our conversation has been, when we lose student enrollment, is that more affordable housing for people that rent may be available in some of our neighboring districts.
We have seen, we have seen a decline in the Seville apartments on Airport, and we have seen a small shift to the Edense Estancia on Mile 9.
That's the one on 1050?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I know there's something going south of me on border that, don't know what it is, I just know there are apartments and a lot of them. I know right by McCoy's, there's another set going up, and again, don't know what type of housing is going to be, but y'all can please look into it because, you know, again, recruit, another way to recruit.
We have, we have lost quite a few, especially on Melissa Street, where there's very, very, very low-income housing, and they've been moving, from what I hear, like, to the north of Donna, where they built some low-income home housing, so.
Okay.
There is shift.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much. I liked the presentation so far. I think we'll get really excited about it once it's more fleshed out.
More confident.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last, not least, is our insurance update. Mr. Del Rosso.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, members of the board. I have two slides to present today. We've gone through the first two months of our new fiscal year. Started off with the new self-funded health insurance plan, claims this year versus last year in the two months. Last year at this time, I'm going to approximate the numbers just to kind of save time. So last year at this time, we had approximately $2.1 million in medical claims versus this year, it's $1.7 million in claims. There's 825, or 826,000 in new claims with the new TPA, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield compared all, and added on to that is the run-out we paid these two months for medical claims, and run-outs, of course, claims that we pay these months that were incurred last fiscal year. So it's a decrease overall of approximately $471,000. The RX, or the prescription drugs, this time last year, total of $556,000 versus this current year, $522,000. So it's a difference of about $34,000 less from this year to last year. So that's really kind of, those numbers always fluctuate depending on costs of drugs. Fixed costs this time last year is $447,000 versus this year with the new carrier or the new TPA, Blue Cross, it's approximately $488,000. There is also the run-out that we paid to the prior TPA of $134,000, and included in that amount is the last payment of our 2016 transitional reinsurance fee, and that was approximately $20,000 in there. So roughly, it's a $174,000 increase this year over last. So when you put everything all together, this time last year, we were already at $3.1 million versus these first two months is $2.8 million, so approximately $330,000 less in the first two months.
That's good.
And then the other one is the self-funded workers' compensation program. I'm just showing just total amounts incurred. So for the first two months of the year, we've incurred $52,410. So, and this kind of goes of what we've incurred the last four years. So these totals are always changing, they're always higher, I mean, going up and down depending on what's been paid. So last year, of course, 16, 17, we're still, we're still, have quite a few of those claims. So last year, updated total, 16, 17 have incurred is $365,324, $324.14. We're doing well.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions anywhere? Bring him back? Looks good, Mike. Moving forward to item number nine, consent agenda. Does anybody else, far on my left, Dr. Polias, do you have anything to pull? Isidoro? Oscar?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No, sir.
And Andrew is gone again.
I'm hoping to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rivera to approve the consent agenda as presented. Sorry, guys. I miss him. He'll probably be pulling something, so. Excuse me. Okay, let's start again. A motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Item 10, discussion items. A, interim financial reports for the two months ended October 31, 2017. Dr. Canales.
The Board of Trustees will have Mr. Andres Sanchez take us through this agenda item.
Dr. Canales, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. For the month, two months ended, October 31, 2017, in the general fund, out of $172 million of revenues, we have received or accrued $31,644,000, which is 18.39%. Now, the expenditures of all the functions of a budget of $170,473,000, we have spent or encumbered $26,710,000, which is 15.67%. All the functions are looking good. It's early in the year, so everything right now is low within the allocation per month. So do you have any questions?
Do you see any, any problems, any issues?
No.
Anything we need to be looking out for?
Not yet. Hit it on when athletics kicks in, culture, religion, but no.
No, any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, this is just for information only?
Yes.
Item B, acknowledgment of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for September 2017, Current Taxes and Delinquent Taxes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, sir. On item B, the tax collections report for September, the current taxes, well, on September, there were no current taxes collected since they all come into November. On delinquent taxes, there was 99,562. There were some adjustments, $43,000 of adjustment decrease, and the percentage of collection for prior years was 2.34%, and the prior year had been 2.32, so they collected 0.02% more than September 2000, from the 16, 17 year. And that's it.
Is that in line with what we've been collecting yearly?
September is a very low month for any year. And it was the same with the prior year.
Okay. Again, just information purpose only, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Any questions, comments? Item C, acknowledgment of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for October 2017, Current Taxes and Delinquent Taxes.
Yes, sir. The same report for October. On current taxes, there were $154,425 collected. There was a big increase in adjustments, some that increased the receivables for the district by $226,051. The net, the percentage of collections is 0.59%, and this is current taxes. The prior year, in September 2000, in October 2017, 2016, sorry, was 0.70%. So that is 0.11% less collections on current taxes. This is taxes that people pay on their own out of their, not mortgages, they haven't kicked in, but people that pay their taxes early, it's 0.11% less collected. And the delinquent taxes for October, there was $228,686. There were 40,000 or decrease in collections and adjustments, and percentage of collections on delinquent taxes was 5.37%. The prior year had been 4.89%, which is, this month is 0.48% higher than last year. And that's also informationally.
Okay, it's higher than last year, but is that still in trend? Or was last year?
No, it's about the same. It's pretty close.
Okay. Okay, information also, moving on to item D, unless comments, questions, gentlemen? Okay, moving on to item D, presentation by Purdue Fielder, Collins &amp; Mont L.L.P., Delinquent Tax Attorney Firm, of Delinquent Tax Collection Activity Report for the period from September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2017.
Good evening, once again, President Lopez, Dr. Canales, and members of the board.
Hold on one second, just to make sure.
I'm here to present you with your annual delinquent tax collection report, that being the period of September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2017. As we explained before, our delinquent tax program for Westlake YSD begins with an emphasis in contacting the taxpayer to resolve their delinquent tax problem. To that end, our local call center has conducted over 20,200 phone calls involving delinquent tax accounts owed to Westlake YSD. We also conduct mailings, and during this period, we have sent over 8,500 pieces of mail notifying delinquent taxpayers of their delinquency. When calls and letters do not have the desired effect, we also conduct property inspections. We go visit taxpayers at their home, or if it's a business, we go visit the business. During this period, we have conducted 219 property inspections. We have entered payment agreements on 120 accounts involving over $205,000 in base tax owed to the school district. When all those efforts to collect taxes do not have the desired effect, we, as a last resort, file litigation. During this period, we have filed 266 original petitions and interventions involving over $1,595,000 in base tax owed to the school district. If the, even after a suit is filed, we still try to work with taxpayers that are wanting to save their property. With, they do not come forward and try to save their property, we do proceed to tax them, again, as a last resort. During this period, we have conducted tax sales. Nine properties resulted in payment in full involving over $28,000. Eleven properties were struck off to the taxing entities involving over $78,000. And what I mean by struck off is that there were no winning bids at the auction, and the properties get struck off to the taxing entities, and in essence, they become the owners of these properties. We have also sold 19 properties during this period involving over $72,000. Tax resales, when the property gets struck off to the taxing entities, then we can go to a tax resale, and we can start the bidding at a lower amount than the original tax sale. We can, at the first tax sale, you have to either start at the appraised value or what is owed at the time of judgment. During this property period, we have had tax resales involving 14 properties, collecting over $95,000 for the school district. We have also filed 20 new proofs of claims and bankruptcy involving over $27,000 owed to the school district. Next page shows the results of our efforts during this period. During this period, we collected $1,158,000 in base tax and an additional $544,000 in penalties and interest for a grand total of $1,703,000. The next graph shows a comparison between last year and this year's collections. As you can see, and we spoke earlier about, this year's collections are 27.61% compared to 27.48%, an increase of 0.13% over the same period last year. At this time, I open it up for any questions that you might have.
I have no questions. Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for the discussion items. We'll move on to item number 11, discussion and possible action items. I will take this time to move item. Aye. Aye. To start off with item Aye. Greg, is there a, do we have to make a motion, or can I take a privilege and?
I'll make a motion.
To move, no, you're as the, as the board president, you can move the item up to the top. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll take this, this privilege to move the item Aye to the, to start off with item Aye. Item Aye is discussion and possible action for the board to consider selection of an attorney firm for the collection of delinquent property taxes, RFQ 17-02-31.
Mr. Lopez, before the score beginning started, Dr. Rivera called me and told me he had a family issue arise, which prevented him from coming and meeting today, and he asked if the board would extend him the courtesy of tabling the items so he could watch the presentations before making the vote and letting the board know that.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion to table this until the. I'll make a motion to table this until the December meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the item of the selection of attorney firm for the collection of delinquent tax properties during discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. How many ayes? Two, three, four, five? Okay, so we're going to table this item. We will bring it back. Well, I would like to bring it back. If there is a special board meeting or some other meeting before, bring it back.
Just make sure all seven of us are here.
Make sure that Dr. Vivera gets a copy of the video so that we can, he can see what we saw, and then move forward with that. Thank you all for coming in today, and we appreciate all you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now proceed with the regular items as are on the agenda. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the resolution casting votes for the nominees to serve on the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2018, 2019. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we recommend that you cast, you have 155 votes for one or more of the 15 candidates nominated to serve on the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term that begins in January 2018. At the October 9th meeting last month, regular board meeting, you nominated Mr. David Hernandez as a candidate to serve on the Appraisal District Board of Directors. You may cast your votes, it's 155, for one candidate, or distribute them among any number of candidates. Again, Westlake ISD has 155 votes. A voting unit can only cast its votes for candidates named on the ballot. You have the 15 names of the candidates on the ballot. The other requirements are by December the 15th, there must, we must, you must submit a written resolution to the chief appraiser, and the resolution is included.
I'll make a motion to cast all 155 votes for number nine, David Hernandez.
Second. There is a motion by Andrew and a second by the owner to cast all our votes for David Hernandez. Any discussion?
I think that's a candidate we had endorsed prior to, so I think it's a good motion.
Yeah.
And he's from Westlake.
He is from Westlake.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the interlocal agreement between Westlake Independent School District and the City of Westlake Parks and Recreation. Dr. Canales.
Oops, hold on, I have the wrong one. Let me pull that one.
Coach Ross. So this one is for us to use the City of Westlake Parks and Recreation for both middle school, baseball, and softball.
Yes, sir, correct. So what we do is, we work very closely with the city, and we utilize their fields so that we can get our baseball and softball seasons underway. Right now, we're in baseball season. For example, tomorrow, we have some games out there already. Right after baseball season, we roll right into, right into softball season. Softball season falls right at the time of our high school softball program because of how the middle school schedules are aligned. So basically, the entire softball season is played at the city parks. And it's, this is the second year that we've done that, or third year that we've done that, and it's worked out great. We work very well with the city. We work jointly together. Administration goes there for our games, security goes out there for the games. We do not charge at those games. It's just hard to control that.
Any, any new teams that have come up since then?
Every, every single middle school in our district in the Mid Valley are now participating in baseball and softball.
So, our district is Elsa, Donna, Mercedes, us.
Yes, sir.
And everybody has two junior highs, right? I mean, four, for the most part.
Some have four, yes, sir. Donna has four.
Who does the maintenance for the fields when you all play at the city?
The city does. They pretty much take over, since it's their fields. Our bases and their, and their bases don't match up as far as, you know, how they sit in the ground. So they, they take care of that. In the event that, that they're not available, we send our guys to make sure that the field is ready for game time.
I want to approve the interlocal agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the interlocal agreement between Westlake ISD and the City of Westlake Parks and Recreation. Any discussion?
Again, Coach, Dr. Canales, reach out to the city again and thank them for allowing our students to participate in their fields and continue the growth. I know we hadn't done much with the city, and in the last two years, we're moving those things forward, working together, so, again.
We can thank our city commissioner.
Commissioner Curers here.
I didn't want him to blush.
I know, last year, there was issues with practice fields, because like at Cuayara, they didn't even have a practice field, so they might need a, you know, I think they started busing them at the end to one of the fields, so I don't know, we might have to use one of those fields for practice.
So what we do is, we rotate the two middle schools, which is, would be Cuayara and Mariah. We rotate them to Westlake East. But we have to work with them a little harder with softball, because it's softball season, to make sure that they get tunnel time, and then field time also. And of course, it's a very fast week, because they play on Saturdays or Thursdays. But we do, we will work with them, sir. Yes, sir. Make sure we get them some practice time. We did give them some backstops also, for, you know, some tee practice. We built each program two backstops. At Cuayara, yes, it's a little limited back there, the area that they have to practice. It's just, you know, that's the nature of what we have there, but I'll keep an eye on that this year, just make sure that they have enough practice time. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the renewal of a retainer agreement with the law firm of Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, Russo, and Kyle PC for legal services related to the provision of special education services. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending the renewal of the retainer agreement. It's $1,000 per year. It helps support staff in relation to any questions we have, issues with special education services. The retainer agreement allows the district to have unlimited phone conversations with attorneys, to receive monthly newsletters on general educational law, as well as information that educates staff on pertinent developments within the field of special education. It also provides access to discounted legal fees should the district ever become involved in litigation involving special education matters.
Second.
I have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew to approve the renewal of the retainer agreement between the law firm of Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino for legal services related and provisions of special education services. Any discussions? I know that in the past, Neil, you've come up and told us how good that, how great a service that is for you. Due to the fact that you're able to call them with any questions you might have, or any concerns that will keep WISD out of getting into any legal problems, or really not doing what we're supposed to be doing for, for a child, or within anybody else for that matter. So, that's, that's a good thing. I know that, that you've said that you get your money's worth out of them, so.
Is the retainer the same?
It's $1,000. Is that a change? It's the same from last year.
Okay.
Just don't say that.
That's fine, then.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action for the board to approve a security system for all elementary campuses. Number one, board determination of procurement method for construction that will provide the best value of the district for the project. Two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And three, and, I mean, excuse me, or three, approval, or, and number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Canales.
Before I recommendation, what this does, it allows the installation of door strikers and card readers on entrance and exit doors at each of the campuses, elementary campuses. It also adds a camera intercon system at the main entrance of each school. It includes the installation of a panic button at all elementary schools that will directly connect to our local police department in the event there is a potential threat. And it adds door alarms to be installed at all remaining campus doors to prevent unauthorized exit or entrance. So it will beep if anybody leaves a building, or anybody tries to get in the building. So this is part of the discussion that's been happening with the facilities committee. We are recommending that the competitive sealed proposal, method of construction, and that either the board makes a determination to retain their authority to rank the proposals to be received, or you delegate that, that authority to administration to rank the proposals, and that the board approves the criterion points to be used for the ranking of the proposals.
So I move that we go with sealed proposals. Correct. And let the administration rank.
And then we have the, the criteria. Approve the criteria.
And approve the criteria that you said, what, Dr. Canales? You lost me there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
As presented.
As presented.
And the points to be used for the ranking, the proposal, and that's included.
Do you have the criteria already? Is it?
We do. It's, uh... It's on page four. It includes price, project cost.
It's all here.
Okay.
The money to pay for this is going to come out of the tax lien, the tax loan?
Yes, we have set aside $100,000 from there. Anything else that we need, we'll get it from fund balance, assign for facilities, for all we need.
It's about, what, $10,000 per campus for the safety and security of the elementaries?
Hold on. Is it, is it a magnet lock, the same thing as a striker? I know like in mission, they refer to them as magnet locks.
Strikers is, is an electronic term. Magnets is what we have at this building right here. We're not, it's not recommended that we look at magnets. We are going to get with the engineer also to see what he recommends. Magnets would have to tie into the existing fire system. So that's the difference between the magnet and the striker, where the striker, you can just hit a button, or you just push it out to release. So striker would be like an electronic lock.
So same function?
Same function, it's just different, it does the same thing, just a different way of getting it done.
Are we going to go straight with a security system, or with a security company do this? Or are we hiring an architect to design something for us?
We're gonna, the agenda item includes engaging the services of Trinity Engineering to help us out.
Okay. I have a question. I know in the facilities meeting, we discussed that some of the campus to move, I guess, put an extra set of doors? So that we stop them at the first one before they go into the second one? Is that part of the design build? No? Just the existing doors?
There may have to be some doors that may have to be replaced, but that, we'll, we'll find that out when, when the engineering comes up.
You're talking, but you aren't talking about when you enter, it routes you somewhere for clearance before you go through another set of doors to access the campuses?
And I think that's why, like, Ibarra set up the most.
Right, right. That's not part of this.
Any other, any other modification we have to make as far as maybe creating like a, like a, maybe, I'd hate to use this term, but like a Sally Port area, we'll have to get with the maintenance to see what they can do to help us with that. But this is strictly just the electronic access control piece.
So at the interest of the door, you're going to have the little camera, right?
Yes, it's a little.
You're going to buzz in, and you can talk to the receptionist?
It'll talk to somebody at the front office. It'll be monitoring that monitor, so they can, you know, basically communicate with the person outside, how can I help you?
And from whatever desk she's at, she can actually open the door or unlock it?
She can release the lock, correct, and then direct them to administr, or to the office to run with the raptor system as far as the swiping. But the panic button also gives them the, the ability, so if they see a threat on the camera outside, they can just hit that button, and it'll contact the police department.
Dr. Canales, you all visited a couple of schools, correct?
We did. We, a team went to, you went to Harlingen?
Went to Harlingen, CISD, and Sherland, ISD.
ISD.
Very similar?
Very similar. We got a lot of good ideas, and at the time, there was a determination trying to be made, can we, you know, can we do this in-house, or do, we're going to have to put it out? At the end, we made the determination that we'd be better off to put it out.
Yeah. Control your costs.
So I saw something about the little card readers or something like that. Is that like an ID card?
Yes, so each employee will receive an ID card with their picture on it that will be able to either swipe it or tap it, the way we have it here at Central Ops to gain access to the building.
Like a limited access to where they can go?
We can control every, we can control everybody's access. So if somebody could have a card, may have access to only one door versus, you know, two doors, or we can limit it just to access at that campus versus, or we can give individual access to every campus. So we control, we control the access.
Well, that's good, just, yeah. Given everything that's happening lately, shootings and all, you know, we, we putting up the fences at most of our schools. I know we still have Margot and a few others that, that we're going to get those fencing projects done. This just falls in line with, with all the safety that we have for our staff and our kids, so, congratulations.
One more question. It's like when somebody swipes, because I know, I see teachers on Sundays and all that, Saturdays. Is that going to monitor, like, who goes in and out on a Sunday and all that?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew to go with the competitive sealed bids, the proposals. Allow the administration to rank the bids, and then approve the criteria as presented. So, we already had a discussion, so let's go for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item E, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the design development phase and the construction documents phase of the new fieldhouse project at the Westlake High School. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you consider approval of the design development and construction documents phases of the new fieldhouse project at Westlake High School. On March 9th, the approval was given to Gomez Mendez Science Architects to develop the plans and specs. On June 19th, 2017, you approved the schematic designs. So now we're ready and recommend the approval to move on to design development and construction documents phases. And we do have a representative here?
Yes, ma'am.
Right there.
From the firm.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. My name is Ron Gomez. I'm one of the partners with Gomez Mendez Science. I'm here to, I guess, one, tell you, yes, we are done with the drawings. And then just to go over briefly what we had, where we are, and the schedule for construction and what have you. First slide is just the aerial view with the fieldhouse and the alternate for the storage building, just as far as location proximity. The next slide is our site plan. And after we met with the Westlake Fire Marshal, the little hammerhead, well, I don't know if you can see it. But in between the fieldhouse and the storage building, the fire department asked us to build a hammerhead there so that they can maneuver there instead of having to sprinkler the storage building. So that was added as far as, and the extra concrete work or flat work will be included in the cost of the storage building. So our base bid will be the development of the fieldhouse and the sidewalks and everything there. And then, again, the widening of the road and the hammerhead will be part of the storage building. Next slide is just the colored representation of the spaces within the fieldhouse. Everything is pretty much the way that it had. There's a, we did a little bit of reconfiguring with some of the lockers with the training room and in the laundry room area. But again, from that standpoint, it's identical to what we had originally presented. That's the storage building. The fifth page, I believe, is the storage building. It's the one with all the metal building components on it. And as you can see, it's bare bones, two entry doors, two overhead doors, and that's it. The last one is the rendering of the outside of the main entrance to the fieldhouse.
That's the, is that the color that's going to be?
That's how we're proposing it, yes, sir. I mean, at this time, I mean, we can change it to whatever we care to.
Just, no offense.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't say wow. It's black. And I don't know if it's part of, if it's the color, I just.
Okay, which one are you talking about?
That one. Next year.
Next year.
So, you know, again, I know it's all part of the budget.
How much does wow cost?
What we're actually doing is we haven't included an allowance so that the Panther and the W are backlit so that they'll glow at night. They're not just a static thing. Yeah. So there will be some improvement there.
And that's the color of the building?
We can make it whatever color we want to. It's just, this is.
Ms. Morales here? Ms. Morales.
Oscar, did you select the color?
Yes, sir.
Did you select the color, Oscar?
Well, we, we all looked at it, everything, and that was the color that we kind of agreed to.
Doesn't it match the pre-existing building? Is that why we chose those colors?
Oh, well, I mean, we can play with the colors. A lot of this is just the representation that we came up with.
There's going to be a mosaic also on the entrance and.
Yes, on the floor.
Right.
What color is the gym? Gray?
Gray.
Gray.
Yes, actually, this is just for presentation purposes. We still have an option.
Okay, sorry. Hey, sorry.
Just a point for clarification. When we get to the materials, we usually have samples that we can take a look at and we put them out for people.
Correct. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Then you're right.
Good.
That's what happens when you're raised by a single lady, single mama.
I'm not going to go there. I will not go there. Okay. I guess the last page is the summary of the project. Originally, the total budget, including FFNE, was two point nine million. Our initial budget that we just came up with was a little bit under two point seven, so that's when we decided to make the storage building the alternate. And our estimate on that one is roughly two hundred and sixty thousand. Square footage wise, for the fieldhouse, we're at sixteen, a little bit over sixteen thousand. For the storage building, it's forty-five hundred. If the Board decides to allow us to go out, we would like to advertise Sunday, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth. Receive proposals on the seventeenth, on the seventh, I'm sorry, December seventh. It's on the last page. If you're following me.
Ah, there we go.
No, just, I saw people writing. Depending on if there's items that need to be negotiated, because we are using or planning on using CSP, competitive sealed proposals. So if there is some negotiation that is required, we could either award the contract on December eleventh or December eighteenth. Both of those are the Mondays. I'm not quite sure which week it falls in, or when your next scheduled is, or whether or not you'll actually have one that close to it. And I used the December eighteenth as the last one. So then, after we are authorized for the contractors and the contractor contracts are approved, thank you, then we'd issue the notice to proceed. And like I said, I used the eighteenth, so that was the twenty-second, which is the end of that week. Then the construction schedule, obviously, the notice to proceed would be issued the twenty-second. Our estimated construction time is nine months. We have been asked the contractor to include days, so it can be less, but we're estimating two hundred and seventy days for it. And that would put substantial completion without any rain delays, or weather delays, rather, for September twenty-first.
Finally, some days. I know we have.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you, because, you know, approved a long time ago and then we've been, wins the shovel in the ground, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Coach Fiojas?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Morales, I know Coach Salinas isn't here, but obviously, the design, the layout.
Oh, yes.
Is.
Yes, we, we met numerous times from start to where we are now.
Okay.
And Coach Salinas looked at it many, many times and, and with Ms. Morales, and this is the design that he feels comfortable with.
That alternate storage building?
Yes, sir.
What's going to be housed in there?
That alternate, that alternate storage building is kind of for all sports. We desperately need that right now.
Is that similar to the one that we built?
Correct. Yes, sir. Very similar to that. We intend, intend to put all our dummies, water cows, the high jump pits, poleball pits, things that get weathered, and every time that those, we have to replace those, it's about thirty thousand dollars to replace those because of the weather.
Does that building have, be wired for security, the storage?
I believe so, Merkel.
It can be?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure it does.
Yes, because we're going to house some expensive equipment in there.
Coach, correct me if I'm wrong, did I read somewhere where the additional parking spaces were going to be done behind the visitors?
The twenty-five spaces, yes, sir. That is a part of what the, our city's going to require, so we're also looking at, at doing some expansion or some renovating of the visitors' parking at Bobby Laki Stadium, and that could, that's going to help that. I've looked at some preliminary numbers, and we're looking to get roughly about a hundred and ninety parking spaces on the visitor's side. So I think that's going to more than suffice what we need.
Behind the stadium?
Behind the stadium, yes.
Mr. Bissett, I know this doesn't pertain to you, but fine arts, thick skin, make it happen. Make it happen.
Yep. All LED lighting?
Sir?
LED lighting?
I'll move to approve the schematics.
Second.
It's to go out for bids.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I moved to go out for bids.
Second.
The only, the only question I had is, Mr. Gonzalez is concerned about the color. Will that pose a hang up on advertising and getting the proposals?
No, no, sir. We'll bid the brick by allowance.
Okay.
So there'll be a variation, and I'll say from, from a white brick all the way to a brick the color of.
Purple.
The gray. So you can, let's not get present.
We have a purple.
I heard you.
You saw the sign.
No, no, I'm just saying, within reason. And we can pick and choose from there.
Okay, then that sounds good.
Okay.
Was there a second?
I did.
Yeah, okay, so I don't read where it says to go out for bids, though. Discussion and possible action for the Board to approve the design development phase and the construction document phases of the new fieldhouse project at Westaco High School.
Yeah, that, that's it. In essence, after these, we'll go out to bid.
Okay.
That's approving design development. Design, it means you're going.
Construction documents.
Okay, so we have a motion by Patrick, a motion by Patrick, and a second by Andrew, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Let's get busy.
Thank you.
Item F, discussion and possible action for the Board to approve schematic design phase for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at the Joko Albiol Kate complex and the welding woodworking shop improvements project at the Peter Brigo Ag Farm complex. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, for this one, we do have a presentation, and at the end, we will be recommending that the Board consider the approval of the schematic design phase for the improvements of the projects needed for two CTE early college high school courses. Advanced Manufacturing Technology Shop at the Joko Albiol Kate complex and the welding woodworking shop at the Pete Abrego Ag Farm complex. So we do have.
Manoelino Josa.
Mr. Nojosa to present.
And I have Humberto Rodriguez, my partner with me.
And Mr. Rodriguez, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Canales, Mr. President, members of the Board. What we have, our project's a little technical, really doesn't have any really face changes on it or anything, they're existing buildings. And it's really two projects. The first project is the advancement manufacturing technology shop, and we're showing mostly technical drawings simply because of that. The existing space, if you oriented this drawing, you're looking at the west side of the, of the Kate building, and it's, it has to do with that, an outdoor space that had some fencing. Actually, the, the space that we're talking about is, is, has some, some chain link fence on, on three openings, and I'll show you that in the elevation in just a minute. But the, the idea here is to come back and take that outdoor space, that's a shell, and provide you with a classroom and a shop building that has, as, as is shown here on this, on this drawing, it has four lathe machines and three mills with a classroom that seats fifteen people. Also, we're converting one of the, the storage custodial building, rooms into a, an office building. So it, it, it involves just closing up that space, air conditioning, and the riser room to the north or to the top part of the, of the building will, will have the, the handling unit and with the, with the venting from that building into the, the ductwork into the spaces itself. But it's pretty much just a very simple shell retrofit and making sure that we have a conditioned room that, that has access to the outside with a door and an overhead door. You can see that this is, again, the elevation from the west side, which the top part shows the existing, and you had a, a screen fence that, that really was made more for equipment for the building. Now, we're enclosing those, those three openings, and the bottom picture shows an overhead door and really a door where we close up the, the, those openings that, that were existing. Any questions on, on the advanced manufacturing technology classroom shop building?
Okay. Have they addressed all the power requirements that they'll need in that facility, or?
Yes, sir. Well, the, the space accommodates that, that fifteen classroom area, and the equipment that's in there is equipment that's going to be moved from the, the other shop building in there. So we, we, we use what was specified, made sure that, that all this, all the arrangement of buildings fit in that space, to give you the maximum use of that space as it is shown on those drawings. The next, the next project is the, is the welding and woodworking shop at the Peter Abrego Ag Complex. And that's, again, that's another building that is an existing building, and the drawing right here shows the layout of this, this pre-engineered building that's, that's on the southern piece of the property. The way this map is showing is you, you have your entrance from the, the west into the complex, and the ag building, the existing ag building, this is a pre-engineered building. We're not really changing any of the, the configuration of the building. What we're doing on the, the bottom drawing shows using the, the west, the northwest portion of it, actually, half of that drawing is an enclosed building, the other half is outdoor. The southern part is outdoor. Well, on the, on the northwest corner is, is, will become a classroom, air-conditioned building that seats twenty-four people. And to your right or to the east of it, you'll, you'll see the three more bays, and those three bays, you'll have the woodworking shop, as well as the, to the south of it, on the left-hand corner, you'll, you'll have a, a welding shop that has ten stations and five handicap. That will, not, it'll be an outdoor in, in the sense that you'll have a, a six-foot wall with chain link fence above it. The space to the, to the left is a storage space that, that will have some chemical storage in it also, it'll be connected with a door. So really, all the walls are, the exterior walls remain the same. There'll be repairs to the walls. We need to meet some of the ADA requ, the handicap requirements to the parking area so it shows some improvements that will be bid separately and not part of the project because it's different funding sources. The, again, that's, this is a, an enlargement of what I was talking about. This is existing space. You can see right now in the existing space, it has the four garage doors. This part right here is outdoor space. And what we're doing is the classroom area, and this, this will be the woodworking area, which remains the same. And then the, the outdoor area, which will be enclosed or caged in, will have the ten welding stations and the handicap stations on the, on the south end. This also will become a storage area, which is an outdoor area at the moment, and will be, will have the same type of treatment on the outside. The exterior, this is the existing, it, it, it's pretty much the same. You can see that the only thing that we're showing on the new construction is how the exterior spaces are going to be treated with this, this, this wall and chain link fence with the dark portion. This is, this is a south end, you can see the whole back south end has a chain link fence, will allow circulation, but, but you will have the, the welding on one side and storage on, on the other side. And pretty much that's it. There's, like I said, the very, very simple construction layout, and the idea here is to, is, is to make, to adapt them to the needs that they've been requested for.
Good. Looks good. Sandra, or anybody here from Kate? Okay. Come on in.
Yes, Ms. Sandra Avila had an emergency, so.
Okay.
She couldn't come, but I don't know if you have any questions. We've been out there, you know, trying to, you know, since the very beginning to look at what it is that, that Ms. Avila needed. As you all know, the numbers in, in the welding program in the early college high school has increased, so, you know, we need some more welding, you know, opportunities for the kids and some other facilities there. I don't know if Ms. Guerra, if you have something else to add?
Just that we're affirming we do have an increase in welding, and we're running out of space in order to accommodate our students. We've asked that we reconfigure some of our existing buildings.
Okay.
So this is our best plan.
Okay, the question, my question would be that, just to make sure that you all are happy with the design and everything that you've gotten. I know that Manuel and his staff do a wonderful job of, of drawing, and right now, it's a lot cheaper to, to reorganize or move things around on paper than it is once, once we start working.
Right.
So if you all are happy and content, that's, you know, we will move forward.
We are, yes.
Is this within budget, the design? Well, the, the design, it still has to go out for bids, but I think you have, is your?
We're trying to keep within the budget. This is schematic approval, some drawings. Come back with the design development.
So we'll stay within bid, Dr. Canales?
We are within.
That is the intention. Out of the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for the budget, we had included two hundred thousand in the loan. The remaining six hundred and forty thousand will come from the construction fund budget.
So total.
Now I had mentioned that, the prior meeting.
And that includes the architect fees, right, the eight hundred and forty?
Yes, included.
All right, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the schematic design for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at Joko Albiol Kate complex and the welding woodworking shop improvement project at the Pete Abrego Ag Farm Complex. Any further comments? Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. G, discussion and possible action for the Board to approve schematic design phase for the new pavilions at Coiada Middle School, Mary Hope Middle School, and new canopy and restrooms for the science wing buildings at the Central Middle School project. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we also have a presentation for this one. We will be recommending that you consider approval of the schematic design phase of the new pavilions at Coiada Middle School and Mary Hope Middle School, and the new canopy and the restrooms for the science wing building at Central Middle School. Our presenter today is almost ready. Good evening.
Good evening, President Lopez, members of the Board, and Superintendent Canales, Hila Alvarado, Vice President of Alvarado Architects and Associates. Here to present the schematic design for the pavilions and restroom additions. Here to present the schematic design for the pavilions and restroom additions at the three middle schools, which would be the Dr. Armando Cojad Middle School, Mary Hope Middle School, and Central Middle School. The scope of work on this project entails a new pavilion at Dr. Armando Cojad Middle School, a new pavilion at Mary Hope Middle School, and a restrooms and at the science wing at Central Middle School with a canopy leading from the science wing over to the main building. The budget set forth is one point two million dollars. And the first location is Dr. Armando Cojad Middle School. And we are locating this pavilion on the southeast corner of the property where there is an existing covered area there with some tables and chairs. And this is out of the way of the fields where they're being used for practice. The second site is at Mary Hope Middle School. And this is also located at the northeast corner of the property in a small island there for, for the transportation is along the tennis courts. And pretty much the floor plan on the pavilion is an open metal building with six basketball goals. And again, it'll be fully lit. It'll have some drinking fountains out there for the students. It's going to have some electrical items out there, some speakers as well. And in case there's any announcements or anything that needs to be made out there or there's a gathering with a principal or a small venue, you can have some hookups there to, to have it there underneath that pavilion as well. This is just an elevation, a pre-engineered metal building. And then at Central Middle School, this is the location on the north end of the science building. We are going to be adding some restrooms there and the canopy leading from that building up to the main campus. Restrooms are pretty much for the boys and girls. We have a large janitor area, which we will also be utilizing with some of the mechanical equipment and electrical panels that's going to be needed for this addition. And then the corridor, right in line with the existing corridor, leading out those doors to the canopy to the main building. We do have a quick elevation of the, of the restroom addition. And we'll be matching the exterior of the building as well. Our schedule, we are in November. We are requesting schematic design approval this November. In December, we hope to come to you for design development. We'll have two months for the construction documents, put it out to bid in March. And it'll give us a little over seven months for construction administration. I do not foresee any issues with the pavilions being constructed in that timeframe. We've increased the construction schedule a little bit longer to allow for a lot of the plumbing that needs to be done at Central, only because that's going to take a little bit longer for, for the underground as well as we will have to redo the ramp and the stairs leading down to the cafeteria as well. So the extra time there is for Central Middle School. And with that, I'll say thank you and open up to any questions that you may have.
I'll move to approve the schematic design.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the schematic design is presented for the new pavilions at Cojad Middle School, Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy and restrooms for the science wing buildings at Central Middle School project. Any discussion?
Yes, Freddie. Okay with the location? Pablo?
Any possibility of speeding up the pavilions?
Yeah.
Since there's not that much, well, I'm, I'm going to say there's not that much, but I think it's, it's an open building.
Yes, sir.
If there's anything you can do to bring it forward before?
Sure.
Before, do your dates, please do so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H, discussion and possible action on a resolution authorizing the resale of foreclosed real estate properties for failure to pay ad valorem taxes. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you approve the resolution authorizing the proposed resale of seventeen foreclosed real estate properties described on exhibit A and B. They're both attached, which were acquired through tax foreclosure proceedings and which are located within the district boundaries. We do have Mr. Iram Gutierrez here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hello, once again. Again, we're conducting a tax resale in February of 2018. We're asking for authorization for starting bids on, there's actually seventeen properties altogether. There's fourteen that are going to tax resale for the first time. We ask that we are able to start the starting bidding at thirty-five percent of the appraised value at time of judgment. There's three properties that are going to tax resale for the second time. We're asking to start, the starting bidding at ten percent of the appraised value at time of judgment. Any questions?
Is anybody living on these properties?
No, there's one home that has a, a brick home on it, but it looks vacant. This property has been struck off to the taxing entity since 2013. Doesn't appear, we've knocked to see if there's anybody there and doesn't appear to be occupied.
Okay. I, I want to make sure, Aram, that we are not putting anybody out. Make sure that nobody's getting displaced. And, and if these are just vacant lands or empty buildings, then, then that's, I'm going to say that you can proceed. But of course, the board has not voted yet.
Yeah.
But make sure that nobody, or come back to this board before, if anything, any, anybody's living on any of the properties.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lopez. And just to clarify also, that brick home that I've told you, this is the second time it's gone up for tax resale. So it's been out there for a very long time. Last photographs of it, I don't, you probably have some photos there. It's very weedy, looks, looks abandoned.
Now, how long have these properties been off the rolls?
That particular property, I think, late 2013.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Have a motion by Andrew, by Isidoro. And a second by Dr. Rodriguez to, approve the res, approve the resolution authorizing the resale of foreclosed real estate properties for failure to pay ad valorem taxes. Is there any further discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Yes, you do.
G. Discussion and possible action on the redemption under Texas Code thirty-four point two one. I don't know how to say this, but I'll just et sec of the property struck off to Wesco Independent School District Trustee in cause number T dash one six one three dash zero nine dash F. How do I say that? Et?
Et sequitur.
Okay.
Yeah, this property was put up for sale back in March of 2016. It was struck off to the taxing entity because there was no winning bid. The owner has come forward and wants to redeem their property. They have a statutory right to redeem their property. And we're asking for execution of a deed, returning the property back to the taxpayer. They have paid all the taxes that were due and owing, all the costs that were due and owing.
Okay.
And we are recommending approval of the redemption.
Someone?
Second.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to approve the redemption under Texas Government Code thirty-four twenty-one of the property struck off to Wesco Independent School District Trustee in cause T one six one three zero nine dash F. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item K, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the schematic design phase for the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you consider approval of the schematic design phase of the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project. And two, that the board delegates to administration the authority to approve the design development phase and construction documents phase for this project to expedite the release of requests for proposals for the project. But before you decide that, we have Mr. Eli R. Ochoa from ERO that will present the schematic design.
Good evening, Mr. Lopez, fellow board members, Dr. Canales. My name for the record is Eli Ochoa. I have with me also Jose Luis Rios. We refer to him as Jay Lou, so.
Good to see you, Eli.
Thank you, nice to see you all. We have the Wesco Band Hall, the Wesco East Band Hall. We've had some great meetings with your staff. We've both learned a lot and have worked through the entire process. And I think we have this project right where you all need to have it. It's been a lot of good work from a lot of good people, both on y'all's staff and on our staff. And I'm happy to report that I think we're ready to go and approve schematic design so we can move forward. The band hall, the new band hall is going to be located directly north of the existing band hall. There's going to be a, a pavilion area that's not going to be covered, but it could certainly be covered in the future. That's going to be placed between the two buildings so that you can have some multipurpose space for the band between those two buildings. And from a maintenance perspective, it's going to be paved. So we're not going to have to worry about taking care of a lot of grass and things of that nature. Also help it drain. But it's right there, located on the north side. The existing band has a main rehearsal hall, has two smaller rehearsal, rehearsal halls. The storages, it's got uniform storage, workroom, private practice rooms, and all the offices that are necessary for a band hall.
How much bigger square footage-wise is it than the existing band hall?
It's considerably bigger than what you currently have. This pretty much mimics what you all have at Wesco High School. And what we were trying to do is really try to see how we could reach some kind of parity between the two. And so, like, the main rehearsal hall is an example here. It's the same size as a main rehearsal hall at Wesco High School. The, the practice rehearsal halls are basically the same size. So we tried to keep them pretty much the same as what your current band hall at Wesco High School is. And, but we went through a lot of processes where, you know, we're trying to plan for the future to make sure that we're just not, we're not going to end up in the same situation.
Right.
But, you know, there's obviously budgetary constraints. And so we're trying to see how we could match those two. And I think we, we finally came up with a really good solution. And this is the plan. We're ready to go. I think on our schedule, we have three months for, for design development and two months for construction documents. We're going to try to squeeze all that in in about three months. We realize that there's a real speed-to-market issue that we're facing right now with all the pending hurricanes and things that have occurred. You know, we're starting to see prices tick up. We're doing a lot of work right now in the Houston market. And they're really starting to see some real changes in their market. So we're trying, we're trying to get it out quickly. And we've heard some of your comments from, on some of the other projects. And we recognize your concern. I'm sure that they're the same concerns that we have. So I just want to let you all know that that is proceeding and we're going to be working forward with that. We did do an estimate. I just pour you here, have the summary. I know that you all can't read this because I can't even read it. But we're at about, on a construction cost limitation right now, we're about four point eight million dollars, which is just a little bit north of where you all had wanted to be. But we feel it's a very realistic number. And I think if we start cutting that back, we're going to really start cutting functionality and services. We do have, I don't know if you can see it there, because again, I can't. But we have in there a design contingency and a budget escalation, just to kind of try to count for how pricing is going to be increasing over time. And so we're recommending that you set up a budget of about five point three million, just to cover it. Not that you're going to end up using it all, but that would be the budget that we could then work within. Again, we're at about four point eight million dollars right now with our cost estimates. And that's where we're at right now.
Andres, what was the budget, Andres, for the band hall?
The initial budget for the building along with four point six million. We budgeted four hundred thousand for the parking lot, the band turf that we wanted. We rearranged the, existed parking lot, so we didn't have to use that. So in net sum, we have five million for the project.
So we're three million, or three hundred thousand?
Three, you're short three.
Well, it's actually six hundred and sixty thousand in architect fees and contingencies. We don't need the contingency, it would only be about three hundred and some thousand. But we have money in the fund balance for facilities for all the need that we can use for that.
Okay.
So we have the funds available?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to approve the schematics.
Second.
The only thing that, I really like the schematics, which is the color yellow on the entrance.
You can't miss it.
We're not editing it.
Can that be changed, the color?
Anything can be changed here. What we tried to do is just kind of blend off a lot of the other colors that were there. And you can see kind of the, the part of the building that's on the right side kind of mimics very closely what you currently have. But kind of setting the actual band rehearsal halls aside, we wanted to. And then we were really trying to focus in on what is the front door. And that's the reason why we did it.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Isidoro to approve the schematic design phase for the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition project. Any more, any further discussion?
Yes.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Are we using the, continuing to use the same, the, the existing band hall as a band hall?
Yes.
The existing band hall will be, continue to be used in our meetings, and I don't mean to speak for your staff. Those are all going to be used for other functions and.
Is Dr. continuing here?
Yes.
But still in, still in line with band?
It's all fine arts. We will have an orchestra room that will also have a mariachi storage.
Okay.
So the existing band hall will turn into the orchestra room and mariachi. We'll have our dance room. Right now, that's the second band hall. We call it the mirror room. But that's where we have the, the folkloric dance and we'll have, you know, cheer, still fine arts. We'll have choir and we'll have theater. So that building is still being used for fine arts.
Is there any openings that need to be cut into the existing band hall to accommodate, to, to where it'll tie in to?
We can't tie in, that's.
Well, not tie in, but to where they can work together. In other words, if you have entrances on this side, but the entrances are on the other side of the, of the new building.
Well, one thing. They line up.
Yeah.
They line up. This, this particular door, if you go due south.
Lines up.
It's going to line up with the other entrance.
Perfect. That, that would be the existing carport, not carport, but the, the existing low porch that we have in the band hall, that covered area, that would, that would line up with that entrance.
Now, you, you have a, an area, the area in between the two buildings, is that going to be concreted or?
Yes.
Well, we're hoping that it will be concreted. I'm really excited about that area because it's just about the same size as a basketball court. And one thing that we're exploring with our band program is a winter guard, which is they march inside. They actually have drills that they do with, within the basketball court. So if, if we're going to be competing in winter guard, then we could have that drawn up as a basketball court for markings and we could have students marching on that for, for their drills.
Seems also like a very nice cozy little area for a, for an outside concert, an outside band performance of that. Of course, when the weather's nice, not.
Well, you guys missed a great function when we had, Mr. Cahuero was there. But we had our, our fall festival and we used our little amphitheater, amphitheater area right there by, by our courtyard. And it was just a beautiful function, so.
Awesome. I think I sang like three songs karaoke there to all the staff.
I wasn't going to say anything, but. Andres, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's a lot of money.
Yes.
Where exactly? And are we cutting anything else out?
No.
Move money here?
The fund balance aside from facilities for all the needs.
Okay. So why don't we don't cut from other projects?
No, 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 we're not cutting anything.
Get the shovel and the dirt. Let's go. These kids need a band hall.
I just like the more passionate color for the entrance.
I agree.
Great.
Is there a particular color you would like?
You know, I don't, I know, I just, you know, I was in, I was in the regiment. And so, you know, everything was very passionate, very, you know, the motto was feel the pride. And I personally never wear a yellow tie into court because yellow denotes cowardice in a lot of circles, you know? That's why I always wear a red and blue. I'm not saying pick a red tie, but just something that. I'm not saying pick a red tie, but just something that pops. When you walk in there, you see power, you see excitement.
We could've done royalty and done purple, but I didn't think that would work.
I don't know.
I know, I know purple doesn't match with the rest of the building, but...
But that can be, we can deal with that later, I think, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with y'all. I'm joking right now, but whatever y'all need, you know, we're gonna be bringing this back to y'all before we go out for bids, and we'll have some more renders, and so y'all be able to see a little bit more of how the finished product's gonna look.
Does schematics, though, look very good?
Thank you.
I personally like them.
Thank you.
Well, just a point for clarification, Board of Trustees, we are recommending to expedite, there's a timeline, to get this going sooner, that you approve the schematic design phase of the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition Project, and that you delegate to us, administration, the authority to approve the design development phase and construction documents so that we can get out and expedite the release for proposals. And that's what we would need to meet the timeline that you see. But we will, we can keep you and will keep you informed with anything, colors and all that, if it's not in a board meeting, through the board update. And hopefully, we'll have, like, color samples and samples of materials to look at before we decide that will be out for us to see.
Okay. I think that's great, and it looks, the outside of the building looks very impressive.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll go back to the, to the motion by Patrick and the second by Isidoro to approve the schematic design for the Wesco East High School Band Hall Edition Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Great design.
Thank you.
Looks good.
Beautiful. Item number 12, closed meeting to discuss A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item one, employment of personnel. Item two, resignations. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal, dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. So item A, discussion regarding superintendent evaluation matters. B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending contemplation litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesco ISD under the Texas Government disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. The time is 8:14, and we are going into closed session. Let the record reflect that Oscar Caballero left the meeting at 8:28. Going back to item A, possible action if necessary, now, okay, discuss in closed meeting, discussion and possible action on employment of personnel. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Second.
A motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to approve as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action on mid-contract resignations. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the mid-year or mid-contract resignation as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion by Andrew and a second by Patrick. Ivan, do we have the name, being that it is a mid-year or no name?
It's not necessary.
Not necessary. Again, motion by Andrew, second by Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action on superintendent evaluation instrument, that's discussion only.
No, it's, it's...
Is that an action item?
Yes.
I move to approve the instrument.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the instrument as presented on the superintendent's evaluation instrument. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Discuss and possible action on consultation with the attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation, or A, settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of Texas Government Code 551.071.
No action.
That is no action. Item number 14, adjournment.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I'd just like to put something out there that after much debate, I will wear a yellow tie at the next school board meeting. And I move to adjourn.
All right. You won, coach, you won. Time is 9:14, as big as a drum.
I'll wear a yellow tie.